Ten o'clock, we're ready to go again.
We're live.
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome back to our afternoon or to our ten o'clock meeting. First item up is our West Hazard HFR bids unit number seven, contract modifications. And we'll leave that with you, Stephanie.
Neil, I'll write them down. So just to let you know, I'm writing them down.
Okay, perfect.
Good.
You're gonna do the calculation too?
Yep.
Perfect.
And Neil, you can write that I was in the meeting also, so Stephanie has that documented.
Okay. Commissioner Muffin on Zoom. Commissioner Elt Hasbrook is well-deserved vacation. Okay, is this first one of number seven? Is that what all three of these are for the first one?
We only have one bid opening today.
We only have one?
We have other business, but we only have one.
Okay. Okay, this first one is, bidder is Dorothy and David Stillwell, D and D, Three and Land Management LLC, for $2,275 per acre. Eight point nine acres, is that correct?
Yep.
Which equals 20,293.
How much?
Is that correct?
Twenty-two seventy-five times eight point nine. I've got twenty thousand two forty-seven fifty.
Well, that's different.
Yeah, twenty thousand two forty-seven fifty.
Okay.
Close.
This one is, uh, bidder is Kayla Miller, Jeffrey Miller Excavating. Bid price is two thousand four hundred ninety-five, eight point nine acres.
I get twenty-two thousand two oh five fifty.
Last run is for Baron Looper, Custom Works. Two thousand one hundred and seventy-five per acre.
Two thousand one seventy-five?
Yes.
Nineteen thousand three fifty-seven fifty.
Three five seven fifty?
Yep.
Okay.
Stephanie, is everyone in good standing with the county?
Yes, ma'am, they are.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve Baron Looper for two thousand one hundred and seventy-five per acre at nineteen thousand three fifty-seven fifty.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those are passes for Baron Looper. You want all these back?
I will. I gotta come up and have you sign, so I'll
Okay.
pick them up when I come on that trip.
All right, got that out of the way. What's next?
We are doing an extension on the Jug contract with Jeffrey Miller. That commences this afternoon. We had always planned to add the acre and a half on another section. It just took me a minute to get the landowner approval, which is now all in place. And so I told all of the contractors to look at that because that was whoever was successful in the bid, I wanted to add that in. And she's agreeable to that, and that's what this is about.
Good.
So this would be an additional, uh, it's actually one point six acres at twenty-four seventy-five for a total of thirty-nine sixty even.
Thirty-nine hundred and fifty?
Sixty, six zero.
Thirty-nine sixty.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the extension for one point six acres for a total of three thousand nine hundred and sixty with Miller Excavation in the Jug Mountain Project.
That's, uh, twenty-nine sixty or thirty-nine?
Actually, it's three-nine-six-zero.
Three-nine-six-zero, okay. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next?
I think I have unit five next, is that correct on the agenda?
Uh, you had five first, and then six is next.
Okay, so this is unit five, this is a West Hazard grant. We're over on West Mountain, working on the common area for the French Loop homeowners. Uh, that, he's doing really well out there. He is actually, was able, once he got into the area, it was so deep in brush when Mara and I were laying it out, you really could not see, literally. And so he got in there. He was, I think it was our first time in the, here, come out here and get soaking wet and not see where you're going. Get stickers all over you, and that was, yeah. So she lasted that, so I figured she's gonna do.
That's not where you wanna go.
But anyway, when the contractor got in there, he said, hey, he said, I see what you did and why, but he said, I can actually give you a better line. And really kind of work that out if that's something you wanna do. We have the funds, and so I told him I would ask to see if we could extend that out. It's good business. And so that's one element of this. That would be an additional acre at twenty-three seventy-five. And then last year, we were working in French Loop over there, that was unit two. And this acre and a half was one I wanted to do on that loop there, that road. We just did not wanna extend it for the contract. It was getting late in the year, it just wasn't, I didn't wanna do that. So I kinda held back on it. And I thought with the contractor that we get on West Mountain just down the road, if they're agreeable and they're doing a good job, we, we would offer it to them to see if they would do it for the same price. And they, he went and looked and he agreed. Anyway, that's an additional one point five acres. And that's at twenty-three seventy-five. And, um, for a total of thirty-five sixty-two.
Thirty-five sixty-two.
This all looks good on the budget. We're, we are putting this money out to complete this grant, and this, these are good ways
To do it.
add some funds here and there.
Absolutely. Make motion on that, Sherri?
I would move that we approve the French Loop expansion of one acre at two thousand three hundred and seventy-five and add in the one point five acre on unit two for three thousand five hundred and sixty-two.
Commissioner, it'll all be called unit five at this point.
Unit five, okay. I amend the motion to include that it is under unit five.
Okay. I second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All done.
Hey, the next is unit six. We're, uh, this is an interesting unit. It's gone very slow and taken quite a bit of time, and we're not actually finished necessarily with the body of the six acres. We had a landowner concern, not for the quality of work, but for the work being as close proximity to their home. What I considered reasonable, they were concerned. They took a trip to Vietnam to eat Vietnamese food. They just got back yesterday. So I put a pause on the, everything that we were doing. We finished everything that we were working on, asked the contractor to take a break, go do some other things. And so I don't know yet what, I gotta go survey, I gotta talk to him, see if I can talk him into the rest of it, then I gotta go survey it and see where we're at. But in the meantime, got a call from a landowner just around the corner, right there where I've been working all these years, and they wanna participate in a project.
Yay, good job.
It's a good thing, it really is. And interesting, they've owned the property two years, the landowner previous had said no. So here they are, they're very proactive.
What road is this off of?
On Meadow. Do you know where the yurt, the yurt is up at the end of Meadow Road? You know where it's usually blocked off in the wintertime except for sleds? Anyway, right there on the right-hand side, there's a yurt sitting there. There's about an acre and a half there. And I'm doing this all quickly. I have the landowner agreement sitting here for you to sign. I've talked to the contractor, he's agreed to work on that particular parcel for the same money that he's been working on the other area. I'm just about to, for sure, meet with the landowner on Wednesday. I'm gonna take the contractor with me, we're gonna actually do the layout. But I've looked at the whole parcel, I did a, what I thought was a reasonable layout in my head in terms of area. I figure I'm gonna be back in here in a couple of weeks adjusting all the rest of it, but this would allow me to get the contractor on site immediately. So that is a reason for one additional acre at two thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars. And that would be added
Stephanie, that's, you don't need to rebid this one? It's just adding to the existing?
We're at, it's what we've been doing all morning.
Okay.
And, um, I get it, I get it. Here's the, here's the, just in this particular instance, which is fairly common, to just bid one acre is really difficult. Because most contractors, they just can't justify the move in and out on that. So that's why some of the extension is nice, because it's for similar, I look around, I go, oh, this is similar work, and for the bid price, it's a good deal. And what this does in this instance, now that I know what unit seven is gonna cost, and if we add this, I have a pretty good idea what the final on unit six is gonna be. When I go to do unit eight, which is Payette Lux, Payette Lakes Club, everything we have is going there. I have six landowners, including the large Payette Lodge, and all of the common area under contract, and then four other individuals. So everything we have left, we will put into that. And that will allow us to close out the grant, having used everything.
Do we have a contractor already set up on that? Is, you still have to put that out for bid?
Nope. Those are all being, the rest of them are being signed today, then I can go do layout after you guys agree, you know, sign these contracts, I'm allowed on their property. And then I'll start laying it out, and we'll try and bid it. These contractors are run so ragged right now that I went around and collected two bids from contractors this morning. They don't have time to drive to the courthouse and drop off contracts. I mean, it's so crazy.
Yeah, they're busy.
It's gonna lighten up. We have till the end of October, so I figure I'll probably come in on the third of September and bring you a bid, and then we can kinda get started. But, you know, we've got that project out there, we've got the project over at Jug, we've got the project at Bear Basin. We've got, um, the one across the, two projects, this one that we'll start that you just opened today, and then we have the one there at, at, uh,
Is this, is these contracts like these, are these pretty much these people's mainstay, or are they doing other stuff?
It's a lot. Some of them are on fire, they've got equipment on fire. We really, one of the reasons for doing this is we wanted to build this small contractor base so that they can be utilized for the small firewise grants. We have individuals that are doing their own work, paying for their own work, that are using these contractors because they're here.
Sure.
And they're effective. And so it's been a way that we can continue to see this contractor base grow so that we can, we have something to fall back on. And when somebody says, I, I'm willing to pay for my own work, then, you know, we have a contractor to, a list to provide to them, so that they can find somebody. You know, when you monopolize all of the acreage that's to be done with just one contractor, you tear down that base. And when you turn around, there's not gonna be anybody else to work. So this county has done an amazing job of supporting this effort. So these guy, you know, these guys are leveraged out the wazoo on their equipment. But they have equipment now that is effective in somebody's backyard. We didn't have that before. It all had to be hand-rolled. And so it allows us to go into places that we wouldn't normally be able to, and
Awesome.
It is awesome. And, and I don't control the bids. I mean, things have a tendency to work out pretty well. And, you know, if we have a contractor that gets buried, I'll talk to him, and under these circumstances, I'll ask him to back off, you know, step aside. Let us go back and deal with how we can, we can get the work done.
Sure, absolutely.
They all seem really generous towards one another and, and get along, and I mean, it's a really positive situation. And, you know, we try and funnel some contractors into smaller things because they're better suited for it. You know, not everybody can do these large jobs.
Yeah, I, I know that's my own trade. Some guys don't wanna do real big stuff, they just wanna stay in their niche.
They do.
And that's fine.
And that's, that's one of the things that some of these little add-ons can help a little bit. And the state lets me, I've been doing it for years, and we do it with good conscience. We do it because it makes sense, and we never do it because we're taking work away from somebody else.
Right.
I love it. So, so it's called unit six, Stephanie, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve unit six off Meadow Drive for two thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollar expansion.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, those are helpful. And, uh, as we navigate, I've got a couple more acres worth of money left over on Jug, based on what the bid was for this last unit. And, um, I have a mind, I'd really like to do a couple acres along the front of Jug, Jug Handle Estates, but I'm gonna have to dig hard to make that happen. I just would like to do it there. If not, I got a couple of fallbacks that we'll go to. There's, you know, no, no money left behind, is my philosophy. And then I have two, I have a lot of money to spend on their evacuation plans, and that's gonna be a big push. So, you know, nobody gets excited about evacuation plans until they have five minutes to get out.
Yep.
And so we're trying to change that dynamic, and, and I'm getting more positive input from the Jug Homeowners Association. And David Carey would like to be a leader in this realm, and would like to be able to say, hey, come look at what we've done, come see what we can manage. They're leading the way in a lot of other positive, living in, with fire, living in the mountains type of, of culture there. And so I think that's gonna be, be a push, but it's pretty exciting.
That's being proactive and, you know, cause he's being a salesman. Cause you are, you're building in the mountains, the forested mountains. I wanted to make it better for you, where you can, you actually get homeowner's insurance, because the insurance companies are really watching. So, yeah, that's, that's good that he's doing that.
Well, he's allowing us to tackle his front entrance, which scares the heck out of me and, and a little more out of Kayla. But we're excited to see how that's gonna go, and they have offered their overwhelming support. Our shop's right there. What do you need? Do you need a pickup? Do you need us to come in and do something? Do you, you know, what can we do? We have some big equipment, how can we help you? And, you know, that kind of, I mean, all our landowners are great, but they have the resources to really be good partners.
Oh, yeah.
And you just, you just don't mind helping.
Awesome. Anything else?
Yeah, me.
You?
I'm on there, buddy. Want me to hang around another couple, three months?
Well, Fire Mission Associates contract extension, oh, I remember this.
Right, right. I didn't bring anything to sign, I just thought it'd be a conversation. I'm not asking for any additional money to be added to anything, just time. Cause we, we're just not done. We just have so much up in the air, and not by choice, just kinda how this summer has gone.
It's how it's laid out.
You know, we're doing actually pretty much record landowner signup in a timely, timely way. It's like anything, when you have a deadline, you know, you work to that deadline. And, um, you know, people are hearing. I mean, the smoke doesn't hurt, you can't breathe outside. So, you know, there's, it's been pretty cool. So I think we've got a lot on the ground. We're, we're slated to finish all of the mitigation work, but it's a push and it takes time, and I can't let up if it's gonna happen.
You just wanna see the project through.
I would like to, yes, there's no, no question about that. Um, it's, and it's been so cool. This is the cool part that I've enjoyed. I could not have planned for how many different situations and scenarios and landowner personalities and contractor personalities and all of that. For her, the scene. It's been like a tutorial on what could happen and why this happens this way, and what do you do with this? And how can you handle that? And she's like a sponge, she's soaking it all up, and now that she's setting up her own units and her, on her own grant, she's ecstatic. She's doing a great job. She's landing, well, she is, she's landing landowners that I've been working on for four years, and she's closing them. And I'm like, that is so cool, because, you know, it's hard. You know, it takes a lot of time and energy, and, you know, why do closers in any business get hired? You know, they know how to finish that out, and she's done a wonderful job of doing that.
You're learning how to schmooze people, is that what?
And you wouldn't think that, considering
It's an educational tool. Right now, if people aren't willing to sign up right now with everything we've got going on with fire in our community, they, they are living in la-la land that they think they're gonna avoid a fire into the future.
That's right.
So, I mean, even the guy that doesn't want it close to his house, where does he think the fire's gonna be? It's gonna be close to his house, no? I mean, you guys have done a phenomenal job, Stephanie. I am more than happy to extend your contract. What, you want until November fifteenth?
I don't care what you decide. What I wanna do is make sure that we get her through all of the reimbursement process. Again, it's not gonna cost you any more money, so pick, pick a time.
I was thinking we could just do it until the end of December, and then at least we have her through contract, so if we need her, that's what I'm supposed to submit the reimbursement.
Okay. But, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the extension of Stephanie Nelson's contract until December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four?
It's gonna be a very good New Year's.
I wanna be at your retirement party on New Year's Eve.
I had a contractor ask me the other day, well, you know, it's gonna be really sad when you leave, and I said, for whom?
For who, yeah. Stephanie's got, she's got a cruise
Stephanie, see, this is not, this is not an, oh, yeah, it is an action item, so yes, we can, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I still gotta second it. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You'd be like, El, he's, after he retires, he's got a cruise plan, did you want it everywhere, something like that?
It's good to have plans. So if you don't mind, it's not an action item, we've got some time. Um, I wanted to bring up an observation today from my experience and time of what we've, we've done here. Because the air quality in this valley right now is pathetic.
Oh, yeah. Yep.
So this is my point. We have spent years building a program where we have somehow convinced private landowners to clean up their lots and bring their material out to be managed in an appropriate way. It's free labor. It's getting neighborhoods to work together, it's getting people to share pickups, it's getting people to have parties and clean up and do things and get excited about it. I'm already getting calls for when the October dates are, for a couple of days that we'd like to do that. So I think we have this cool program that's really working well. With anything, too much success often creates problems. You know, because of the infrastructure associated with dealing with, with that. And one of the things that we've been able to keep this going for is the fact that we've done it as inexpensively as possible. Fire departments don't charge anything, they provide all the oversight, labor and location and, and work through that. And then, and work with the, the contractor that comes and picks up the bins. Contractor picks, they've given us, I mean, they paid for the whole first year themselves, didn't even charge the county. So they have kept us really going because they haven't overcharged or become expensive. And so there's a couple of reasons that allow that to happen, and that is that they have been able to put their debris from the bins on the Lake Fork Road compound. And that's where it's gone. That shop is across the street. They don't have to drive it all the way up to the transfer site. And it just makes especially our heaviest uses in McCall, and that turnaround's quick. And so they're able to service the bins on heavy days, and they'll also service the bins on Sundays. And so there's, you know, there's some real, cause our, we have a very short window when we put those bins at the fire stations. And then, um, the debris is managed.
And you're talking about a roll-off at the fire station?
I am talking about the roll-off bins. We also have a very active cost share program with communities where they do a fifty percent cost share on a bin in their community, scheduled throughout the summer. It's all pre-approved. Mara has taken over this responsibility and has worked out a program specific to her needs as a county employee with the contractor, so that that all works. There's an approval system. But it's, it's difficult. The wise communities book in April, cause they know that it's gonna be highly desired, and there's just so much capacity. So they're very excited, they get their communities really organized and ready to work and put those debris items. They monitor the bins, they take care of all of it, because if it ends up with a bunch of trash in it, they don't get to do it again. So, point being is, is that that's working. Also, more communities for free getting debris out of their communities, out of their neighborhoods.
Question. So, so they're doing a, a project like this. Do you guys ever have them set up where they can just mulch it and leave all that mulch out on the forest floor?
Well, mulching on private property for like spring cleanup or for removing debris that has fallen, or they're actually gonna get in there and do the separation of trees, uh, it's very expensive.
It's expensive?
Mechanical equipment and anything with a diesel motor and a moving part is very, very expensive.
Okay.
And so the debris that goes into these bins is hand harvested. So whether they've hired someone to come in and put them in the bins, I just talked with a landowner over at Rivers Crossing. They had a huge community deal this weekend along with their HOA meeting. They all got together, they filled up a bin. And turns out that one of our contractors lives out there too, and so he showed up and helped lift things that were hand harvested into the bins. So it kinda made it work more effectively. So it's a really neat community-type deal. That service is not paid for through the small firewise grants, but rather through this other program for the fifty percent cost share. They have to come up with half of it somehow. And they do through their HOAs, or they all put money on the table, however that works. So all of that debris goes to the Lake Fork site and doesn't go all the way up the hill.
Yeah, cause what we do is, then we grind it.
Well, so I wanna, I wanna talk about that.
Okay.
Cause that grinding thing has only been going on for a couple of years.
Exactly.
And I know that there has been heartache, cause I get the calls from the same people that Sherri does, that there are people that are not happy in either end of November, or the first of February, or whenever Southern Idaho Timber or whenever Southern Idaho Timber and the Donley Fire Department get together and they do a very scientific measure of when is a good time to light the pile, which doesn't cost very much to do. And it's monitored and it's managed. And I'm only bringing this, this is entirely my opinion. But as I look around the valley right now, you getting any calls about the smoke now? Right? Because, so how do you like your smoke, you know? How do you like your smoke? Do you want your smoke from giant forest fires that are undoubtedly, eventually, no matter what we do, they're going to come into this valley. And everybody that can help their neighbor out by doing something on their property, help their neighbor out by helping them with something on their property, they're going to be more resilient. If it starts becoming extraordinarily expensive to remove debris through this program, I can see the program going away. Because it's just not logistically possible.
Right.
There aren't enough bins to leave them out. There's not enough time to do turnarounds. There's all of these issues. And I'm not asking for anything or any decision. I'm just, it just struck me that the smoke today is 100 times worse than anything that we suffer for four or five days during a winter burn. And so I just wanted to be greedy and take a little time to throw that out there because I hate seeing any extra money thrown into that. If there's money to throw into that, let's put it somewhere else. Let's put it out on the ground. Let's use, let's get something out of it. And I understand you guys have a lot of politics that you have to deal with and you have a lot of, of citizens that you have to manage. But honestly, there's some common sense here.
Oh, we know. I, I'm not, yeah.
And I, I really do hope that at some time when those conversations continue, that may be my perspective. This may be a little bit helpful and might even lead to you talking to landowners that have taken advantage of this program. Because it's exploded. It's almost too successful. You know, there's backup lines at the McCall bin, you know, on Friday and Saturdays because so many people are trying to do this. And it's, it's really, it's a lovely program and I think it would be sad if it becomes too expensive.
And you're starting to see a lot of people move to this area. And they're seeing fires and they're seeing the insurance problem. They're realizing, oh, these guys have a program. I'd be smart to step into that.
I think so, Commissioner.
I think that's what we're seeing.
I think so.
And so.
And I think that the fact that additionally, the transfer site is open for the entire fire permit season, May 10th, October 20th. And that individuals that are even more capable or more earnest can't meet the earlier window at the fire stations. They're taking that debris up. We charge for commercial loads. So they're coming in, you know, they all, again, anything that's mechanically harvested needs to be dealt with, you know, and pays for their way for that. So, you know, if you're in there cleaning a lot out for a house or pulling stumps or anything like that. But it just is an opportunity and it's becoming part of the culture. People are making plans around it. And that's one of the things that I really hope will continue. And, you know, the dollar drives everything, man.
It does, always has. Always has, always will.
And, you know, and that there may not always be a grant to pick it up. Now, if there is, great. You know, as conservative I am, whenever money gets come, gets brought into this area and we get a chance to deploy it and we can see it and we know that something's happening, I'm all over it. We're keeping people employed. I'm all about it. So there's lots about that that you probably know all of this, but I can't accentuate it enough. And hopefully something positive will come out of it.
Well. Stephanie, I, I, seeing your energy and what you do, you're not going to be able to sit still very long. I can tell you that.
I don't know.
You'll find something to do.
No, I'm not, I'm not getting rid of my business. I'll keep my consulting business open. And there are lots of places that may need my help. So these are all of the extensions.
I have recorded your comments for our meeting on Wednesday.
Great, thank you. I can't believe how the smoke has settled into the valley. I think it's because we're getting hit on all sides.
Yeah, I mean, I can still see the skies up here a bit, but I, so I'm thankful for that. But yeah, it's, it's really bad health right now, environment for everybody.
When you come down in, right of McCall, then you come into Lake Fork and then they're down. It's so bad. So we're still really busy with our Firewise grants. They're all coming along.
Good.
Yeah, I think everybody's got, every, got a few in process and a few completed. And we'll put in a few more warrants tomorrow from some folks that have finished. And then keep rolling in, but I think there's some good stuff going on out there.
I think there is too. And I think, you know, again, having all these fires, it's, it's created a heightened awareness for people. And that's when you have to capitalize on, you know, the conversations. When people look around them and know that this too could happen to me. I was hearing last night that that woppity fire over in Boise County is now taking houses. Outside of Grand Gene.
Right.
So, you know, people understand. You can lose your second home. You can lose your primary home really easily in a fire. And we are prime fire area, so we got to try and protect us.
It's difficult because it's a matter of statistical, you know, situation.
Yeah.
You don't get to hold it off forever.
No.
Be diligent as you possibly can be, but statistically, you're not, not in your favor.
Yeah. I know my neighborhood has a lot of empty lots that people are not managing. And it's on my mind all the time. It's just prioritizing my own personal life instead of the county's life that I struggle with.
Where do you live, Commissioner? What area do you live in, Commissioner?
I live on Verita, which is off, so if you're on West Mountain Road, you just go a block north, right there at West Mountain and Boydston.
Oh.
So they just build all those new apartments really close, fairly, fairly close to me. I back up to kind of where the Whitetail Golf Course is. So.
Yeah, it's difficult. One of our toughest problems has always been absentee landowners.
Yes.
They have gone through a legacy inheritance where people have actually never even been here.
Mm-hmm.
And the last thing that they want to do is spend money on something that all they want to do is sell. And, you know, or they think they'll keep for their grandchildren. So don't change it. Don't cut any trees, right? And so that can be super difficult. And it's, we're, we're getting better at it because there's a lot that's going on in terms of changing how individuals in communities manage their neighborhoods. And so the fact that they're even wanting to talk about fire at their homeowners association meetings, which I keep telling, I keep telling Mara, man, those are a time sink, those homeowners meetings, right? And oftentimes you don't, they don't even want to, they're not there. They're there to have a barbecue and see each other and figure out how not to let somebody park their RV too long, right? And, well, it's true. I mean, those are big agenda items, right?
It's true. That's true.
But I, I, so anyway, but I got talked into going to one because it's been somebody we've been working with for a very long time up at Aspen Ridge. And so, I mean, they've just been putting in great effort. And so I go, okay, I'll go. And it was so funny because we ran into the couple that are really effective up there. And they said, hey, guess what? We got a landowner that's going to be part of our internal grant program. She said, never, never, never. And she said she heard what you had to say and she heard you. And now she wants to take advantage of that program. So, one, you know, there's 50 people standing there, but, you know, even one is something because that will spread. And when they see the resulting work that's accomplished, then, you know, it's like, hey, that looks pretty good. You know, because we talk about aesthetics with our contractors all the time. You know, I'm sorry, yeah, what you did probably is fire resilient, but it doesn't look very good. And if we're going to sell that to an adjacent landowner or somebody else, it needs to be a respectable completion. It needs to recover that year.
And people need to see it. And, you know, it ma, it makes a difference because all it would take was one fire, loss of a number of homes. And all my earphones would be ringing off the hook going, what can we do not to lose our homes?
You're right.
We hope that never happens.
Well, I hope I retire. I don't mean to be flip about it, but I, I go through fire season every year and I think, gosh, I hope we're not tested.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I hope what we do is not tested. I think what we do is great. But that's, and I think it will, really will help. But honestly, it's something that you just hope you never have to, like, buy an insurance. You hope you never have to use it. And if that's making more people more excited. She's probably had more phone calls in the six months that she's been here than I've had in six years. I mean, well, people are locking onto her, you know. I think this has been really positive, bringing this into the county because that brick and mortar appeal to some people is really super. And so she's there to, you know, as part of her ability to handle this program. You know, I couldn't be happier.
They just know where to go to have a conversation too. When you do have an office, that's something we always should have thought about with you.
You know, I had, I, yeah, I had an office until 15, full time, brick and mortar, in Donley. And I finally gave it up because the only person that came by was Gordon. I mean, you know, it's just, it's just funny.
But you were, you were working out there creating the program though. Stephanie's, or Mara's reaping the benefits of what you've sown. So now it's just, you know, it, now it's time to grow it. And I'm very excited about it, Steph. You've done a great job. I think Mara's going to do a great job. I'm really happy as a county that I can go back to my constituents and say, this is what we're doing for wildfire. Because there's a lot of counties not doing anything. And I truly think you're making a difference. So I appreciate that.
You guys are awesome.
Thanks for your time. Have a little break. Keep feeling better. Keep that ice going.
I am. I'm almost there. I just, I wasn't feeling it today and I thought, you know, it's, I, I just need to give myself that grace to make sure I'm not pushing it so I don't have issues at the end of the day, so.
Good, good. Hey, my girlfriend Cindy Bachman from Oahu County is going back for the Pilt meeting.
And I was so bummed. I just declined it because I just am not certain in two and a half weeks I'm going to be able to do it yet. So I'm glad Cindy's going. Encourage her to go to Naco this year, to DC, and I'll get the chance to meet her there.
Yes. Well, and quite honestly, she's green as grass on a lot of this stuff. I know she would probably really enjoy your mentorship, so.
I'd love to work with her, so.
I'll set up, I'll set up.
I'll reach, I'll reach out before she goes back.
Okay.
And have a conversation with her. I just, they walk a lot and I didn't want to get back there. And first of all, stressed myself trying to keep up with them, but, you know, having to have a wheelchair would not be fun. So we walk from, I, literally, I could get in 20,000 steps a day when I'm back in DC, so. I got to make sure I'm ready for that. And I'm just not there mentally nor physically, I think, so.
Good for you for taking care of yourself.
I'm trying. It's hard for me, so.
All right. Well, we got stuff to do.
Guys.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Be safe out there. She's packing now, so be careful.
You know what the purse looks like now.
How you doing, Scott? Living the dream, huh? Do we have anybody else coming with you or? Yeah, I read all that. You read all that, Sherry, on the engineering for Solid Waste?
What a read.
Yeah, that was a lot.
And, you know, Neil, I don't know who's going to be negotiating when the time comes up with them. During the end of my term, your term, we will be renegotiating Lake Shore's contract. And man, we need to put some kind of maintenance clause in there. They have just beat the heck out of our buildings.
It's bad.
And I don't, yeah, we need to strengthen that some way, in my opinion.
Scott, I had, after reading the whole thing, the whole proposal, and, you know, it was, it was very well done.
Yeah.
The guys did a really good job. My question to you is, I mean, you're seeing growth in the county just like we are.
Yeah.
Should we be doing more?
Well, that's, you know, with adding like the Z wall and stuff, we are, you know, creating more, you know, making it more streamlined, you know, with, with the Z wall and household trash being taken out there.
Oh, let's see. How much is that worth today?
I'm, I'm up in the thousands by now.
Um, so we are looking at adding capacity, you know. I, I talked with Travis this morning. One thing he suggested we look at, there is a scale in the lower pit down there that is non-functional. And he said, that's something we want, you know, because we have, we do have the funding is to get it operational and that would change some of the sloping of the floor and get rid of the trench drain in the center because you're ending up with two, two grades. So you're trying to push down one and then push back up and eliminate that and then slope it to the pit and then get the, get the scale back there. For one thing, that'll keep them from having to pull out and get into traffic and, and get back in. They can load there more efficiently, quicker. They can see what their loads are.
Sure.
And also put a pit drain in it. So that the stuff that comes from the floor is graded back there, goes in and then gets pumped out of there. Which make it more efficient, make it a better push into the building and stuff. So that was another improvement he suggested. While we're doing it, let's, you know, let's kind of do it all the way.
What's that? I guess I, I was reading all that. I'm trying to figure out, how are you guys going to do this in phases? Like to be able to do half the building and keep the other half still operational?
First thing we'll do is probably do the Z wall and stuff out there and create that area out there so it can handle the, the household kind of residential and keep one bay open for the commercial, you know, the, the route trucks, the contractors. And that way, and get, you know, one bay done and then we'll do the other bay. The scale's a different story because we've had to pull the scale apart, which means.
And that's down there where the trucks?
Yeah, it's where the trucks, trucks actually sitting on the scale.
Yeah.
It's just been non-functional for, I don't, for my time. And is to get it up and get it functional. Like I say, they can load their trucks. There was a reader on the wall at one time. And they know their trucks are loaded, pull them out. They're not going and getting into the people coming in, tying up the scale. And just between that with the Z wall and, and things pushing better, it just, you know, helped the total deficiency up there. And like, I was saying, it'd probably be good for another 15, 20 years. You know, with just what we're looking at doing now.
So Scott, when you're saying Z wall, I read that to mean temporary structure. Is that a temporary structure that they're asking to be put up for a couple bays for the household? Or is that, is that a long-term structure?
They're looking at a long-term because we're going to take like two, if you, the, the, a lot of the pole barn with their break room in it, is there's three bays, is taking two of those bays off and bringing traffic in, in that way. And looking at actually doing a coverage structure there for the, for the household waste.
Scott, would it be possible for you to put, I don't, I don't know if you have this in front, well, you should. It's in our packet. Would it be possible for you to put that up on the screen while I'm on here? It's not, is it?
It's.
Oh, yeah. You should be able to share your screen. Scott, I guess my question is, so we, we've been having conversations on and off about how do we expand this thing? And I know on one side of it, honestly, I, I don't go up there. Fred goes up there. So I haven't been up there in a long time. Um, some of this is a downward slope. My understanding to the south, but to the north is an upward slope. Like they just cut a pad in the middle of this mountain. Is there something that needs to be done during this expansion to actually expand the footprint into that upper slope and create some retaining? Into that upper slope and create some retaining walls? Or not? You think that this pad is an appropriate size long-term?
I'd have to see what the, where our actual property boundaries are up there. Um, I have to look at that and, uh, to see.
The only place you're close on a property boundary is when you go up to the upper pad.
I had, actually, I had, I didn't bring it with me. I just got the survey from, they surveyed the entire site up there. And around that area and I'd have to. And look at that, because that's kind of one of the things Travis pointed out. It's just. There's just not much room to ex, you know, expand it much more there.
Right.
So I'd have to look at that.
I think you'd have to do some retaining walls somewhere. But I mean, we own a ton of property in that, in that whole general location.
That whole, yeah, it all slopes away except for the northwest.
North right there behind where they load the trucks.
Yep.
Where the road kind of comes around the, the loading dock or the loading bay there.
I mean, that could be expanded up into there to do another full transfer station if need be. You know, if we kept growing to the point where.
Yeah.
We need to add.
I know when they were Davis's log ad a couple of years ago, they were pretty close up there on that hill to the. Transfer site. So all the property goes far enough to actually do another transfer site there.
Yeah, I don't know how far it goes up.
Cause that fence, as you're coming up there and make the curve, that's all Davis's property and it was around there. So. I don't, you know. It's, you know, kind of one of those things he said, you know, twenty years down the road since the, kind of how it's perched up there on there that. Um, what other counties have done is they, they do kind of like we had with the recycle. They have, you know, an acre here, an acre there with, you know, bins that, you know, people throw their trash in. Because they, they, you know, when they run into this. He says quite a few counties have that, but he says what we're looking at right now is we probably give us a fifteen to twenty year timeline. You know, to get ready for the next days of it.
Right. Oh, and, and the property, I mean, you could probably, if we need be, you could purchase enough property from the Davis's.
If you really want to give it more up.
Well, nobody wants to give it up. But I mean. That would be a possibility.
Cause that's, you know, talk, you know, there's other, there are other plans is, you know, if, if you've been to how the Boise, you know, Ada County landfill is where they have the. Basically, they come in, kind of inspect your load and then they don't see you again till, you know, you don't see them again. You know, you just check out, you know. Talking about like putting a scale house down by the gate if we could buy, you know, like pops that, you know, the north side of the road there. And do something there or somewhere along the lines to try and kind of speed things up and, yeah, but, um.
So Scott, you've got two hundred and thirty feet off the backside of that, um. Where the household trash is right now. At the property line.
Oh, that's.
So it goes back to the top of that little.
That's not very much.
And then in back of where on the, the sheet that they sent us that shows the pad currently, there's one truck sitting there. Not very far off the back of that where that, those trucks are. So, yeah, not huge. For having as much ground as we have up there, we're pretty much on the one side of it.
Yeah, it's kind of, they're kind of surrounded by ravines or, you know, draws and stuff.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I was, I mean, it's a good proposal. I thought it was very well done by this, uh, outfit. It's like there's a lot of work that's gotta be done on that building.
Yeah, I mean, the, the building, yeah, itself is. There's actually, they're looking at some of the, the trusses and red iron in there that have been twisted and bent that possibly could need replacing. Not just, not just the entrance framework and stuff.
Are they going to, one thing that caught my eye, you know, I know the back wall there where they dump it in, but along the sidewall. Was they gonna redo that whole wall?
Yeah, gonna armor that, yeah. Armor that up higher.
Higher?
Yeah.
That makes, that makes sense.
That. And, and I'd kind of like to talk to Travis about the back wall. Um. I'm not quite sure why they're so worried about it because it doesn't seem to. You know, the way they pick it up and just put it in the trucks, that back wall doesn't seem to be, um, affected that much. Uh, as I, I was, that's something I forgot to ask him today, why they're so concerned about armoring that back wall so much since it doesn't seem to have.
Looked like half of it was already armored.
Well, it had, it's had plywood up on it. It has plywood up on it.
Well, that's what that is, plywood.
Yeah, just plywood on it. Instead, it's kind of on the, on the ends and around the back in spots. There's plywood up on it. Like I say, it doesn't seem to have a lot of contact with anything. So.
It shouldn't.
It's not, yeah.
It sure looks wrinkled on the back of it. We're not having contact. It looks damaged.
Oh, they just picking up bigger stuff like mattress or something. Hitting that wall. I, I think if you just. Yeah, put some inch and eighth plywood up there.
Yeah.
You know, I don't think he's hitting it with his claws on his tracko.
Yeah, um.
You guys are much more adverse or knowledgeable about this than I am, but couldn't you put some kind of a hardy plank or a hardy siding up there or? You know, something that's got some concrete in it?
Um, like I say, that's something they'd have, you know, um, you know, they're talking kind of like expanded metal or something like that, you know? Say, I don't really. Seen that much.
Let's.
Damage on the back there, but.
Let's do it once, whatever we do.
Yeah, and that's, you know, I was talking with Travis today. If we're gonna, if we're gonna do this and we're gonna, let's just get it all done.
And Scott, would you remind me how, how this came in as according to what your budget was for this?
How this came in?
Well, um. Just looking, this is well, I mean. What do we, I'm thinking we have like. One point seven left over after this, around our dug that we're.
We, for next year's budget.
Yeah, I'm looking at next year's budget of what you, you know, you got, you can add or Gabby sent me. The building improvements that we're gonna operate out of.
Cause we need two point two five five, right?
Eight point nine was in there.
That, that's what we budgeted for capital improvements was three million, nine hundred thousand.
So, yeah, this is, uh. Um, you know, well under that and we could look at any, some additional recommendations. And stuff, because this doesn't include like the scale down there. You know, he's looking probably another five hundred thousand if we want to bring that scale. Back into play and do a, a drain and stuff for it. So, because I understand what happened before it filled up with water and just froze.
Sure.
And stuff.
I thought we'd already fixed that, Scott. They, didn't we already allocate funding for that?
Not since I've been here, right?
Not that, not that scale.
Yeah, I thought we, I knew that there were some issues with it freezing and I thought that we had authorized already, you know, some fixing there, but it's not been fixed. It's not been fixed. So.
No.
So right now you're asking us to approve the two point two five five?
Yes.
Okay. And then you'll come back with the rest of it if you choose to move forward with.
Yeah, if we, we want to move forward with some other improvements, you know, um, there. But yes.
Scott, I'm looking at this picture that they did on that back wall, that armored wall you're talking about.
Yep.
And, uh. Now you can see where the tracko arm is there. It could easily bump that wall with just junk.
Yeah.
That's probably what just tore it off there. But, uh, that scale underneath. That's not a really good design. This is my, my opinion.
Yeah.
So they're, all they're doing is they just want to make sure they're not pushing over eighty thousand when they pull out of there. And that what they, what did, what do they allow?
Um, they usually get about thirty thousand on a truck.
So the whole truck and trailer and everything is?
I don't know what their gross weight's allowed to be, you know, I don't know. I just, I know that Travis and the Great West guys are amazed how much they get on their truck. Um, no, it's, it's more than general, generally see around twenty, twenty-two or so. But Eric's been doing it long enough out there. You know, he knows how to load them trailers. In fact, when Eric's not loading, they don't get that much when.
Really?
Yeah. When they have Colton or someone else filling in on the weekend or something, they're running the twenty-twos, twenty-threes and stuff.
So they, they still have to go around weigh.
Yeah, they, they lay, they load, they weigh, they see where they're at. They have to pull some back out or, um, is what they do.
Well, that's a hassle.
Sometimes it's two or three trips. I, I went up there, see them pull out, they weigh, come back in, put more on, come back and weigh.
That's, that'd be frustrating.
Yeah.
Oh my, that'd be terrible. Yeah, but that, that one underneath is terrible.
We've got to get this done before we lose that whole building up there. That structure right now is really in tough shape. So.
Yeah. Yeah, it's like they recommended, we actually talked with, had Dar Ripple Construction go up and look at doing some temporary bracings on that front. Till we can get to that phase of replacing it.
Right.
And you'll have to have this bid, is that correct?
What's that?
You'll have to have all of this bid.
All this work?
Yes.
Yes, yeah. Actually, actually, Great West will help in the bid process. That's part of their, that, the, the agreement we signed with them, the contract. Um, is they will participate, participate and help in the bidding process.
Now they, uh. Have they checked or have you checked? Are there similar counties like us where you're dealing snow and freezing and everything? How do they weigh their trucks out or, I mean, do other people have the same kind of site like we do? Um, in other counties?
There are other sites like it. They, they're kind of surprised to be loaded with a tracko. A lot of them have it where you just push it into them.
Right.
And stuff, but then you, you can't get the weight on them that they, they get. And stuff, um. But, um. I mean, they, they deal with several, I mean, quite a few counties up here. In fact, they manage one county's solid waste for them and stuff. So, um.
And what's the, what's the cross member in the middle there? It looks like it catches everything.
I'm not sure what page or pictures you're looking at. So I'm not out there. I can't tell you what page.
Exhibit six. It's a loading chute where it's showing plywood and on the back wall and everything. I think it's one more. There it is right there. That cross member in the middle? Is there a reason for that?
Cross member where? Let's see.
Well. Bring the cursor down there, right in the middle. Yeah, to the left, right there. See that? There's a cross member goes across right there.
Yeah, there is. There's a deal. It actually sheds the stuff down into the.
So what's the reason for having that there? Isn't that?
Well, because I think the reason this was kind of designed for them to push it into it.
Right.
If you push anything out there, it's, it's kind of a support of, you know, a lot of out there, but it also sheds the stuff into, into the truck.
Yeah, I guess I don't understand that. Cause the truck, the truck is the full length of that bay or just the length of one bay?
It's mostly the full length of that, I think. It's not quite.
Yeah, I just, I couldn't figure out why in the world that piece would even be there. It's like a lot of stuff hangs up on it.
Yeah. It's part of the original design. I'm not sure why they put it in there, but I know, I know it's sloped. So if it starts dipped on it or pushed on it, it, you know, it sheds it off, but.
No, I get it.
Some part of the structural, they feel it needed to have in there. Or what it is.
I'm not sure the practicality of it, but oh well. Um. I'm good with the amount. What, what do you think, Sherry?
Yeah, I'm good with the amount too. I think we just get it done and go ahead and get started on it. We can get it bid before, um, this. Before fall. So I would move that we go ahead and approve. And get back to that document. On up there on one. There you go.
That's further down.
I would, I would move that we approve the two point two five five million dollar. Uh, construction. Or let's see, do you want the actual cost on it yet, Scott? I mean, this is their approximation or just to have that we move forward with the Great West engineering? Proposal.
I'd say we just move, move ahead with the proposal.
Okay, then I will make motion that we move.
This is the construction amount, is that correct? This is just their proposal.
This is a probable construction cost.
Right. Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, Sherry.
I would move that we move forward with the Great West engineering. Proposal for the, um. Renewal of our transfer site.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ocean passes. Yeah. Tell those guys they did a really good job. I, I was impressed. They did a really good job. It's real, very thorough.
They've been working hard with. And like I say, they're more than glad, you know, if. If we want to have them zoom in, you know, and answer questions or anything else too, if you want to schedule a workshop. You know, so they can actually clarify things better for you. Um, we can do that too. They're more, you know, willing to come up or have a Zoom meeting with them.
So are we looking at? Actually getting started on this building in the fall or do this in next spring or what?
Probably they'll. With the bidding and stuff, it probably won't start till spring.
Till spring?
I'm looking, trying to, you know, a completion date of July, August.
That'd be awesome. What about the, the temporary bracing that we read in here?
That, like I said, we're looking at right now, um. It's kind of companies of Great West, Dar Ripple Construction and R and M Steel. Cause ours in their archives have, um, prints of the building. So they, they're kind of, three of them are conversing on kind of what we need to do, you know, up there and do, um. Try and kind of solidify those corners and stuff on those, that one you can see is almost totally sheered off.
Yeah, yeah, I saw that.
And, uh, yeah, I, I just can't imagine how hard you have to hit that thing to do that much damage. Even one of those loaders, you know? And not, not just once or twice. I mean, that has been just repeatedly done.
You gotta hit that thing hard.
Yeah, but the, the, the damage is not just a one or two or three time deal. Those things have been hit dozens of times. I don't know how you do that.
What does that do to their trucks? You think?
Well, you know, I think it's basically the counterweight on the back of them loaders. You know, I mean, it's a big old cast iron that, you know.
A huge weight back there.
Yeah, you know, so I'm sure it, you know, knocks the paint off it and stuff, but yeah, it's just.
Backing into it.
Yeah, just flying backwards in and out of there and not paying attention, you know?
That's why I think we need to talk about the maintenance issues because if they have to pay for part of this, they're gonna be a whole heck of a lot more careful moving forward.
Well, we just, we just got the, you know, I'm speaking to, we just, um, Jake Fullwiler, who he's the one that did the steel erection. For Dar Ripple Construction at the recycle center. He just delivered the repair stuff for the door around, um, the baler there where they hit it. And, um, their, Lake Shore's paying for all of it. I've got to submit, our, their insurance agents already contacted me and I just submit the bills to them or.
Oh, good.
Abortion. So. Um, you know, as soon as it got hit, they, Terry called me, asked me to go up there and look at it. We got it measured up, um, and so. Um. You know, like they're more willing or they're willing to. Take care of what they have damaged. So.
Well, I think once we have the new facility in place, there'll be. There'll be a lot more scrutiny there and they'll.
Yeah.
Know they're gonna be watched.
Yeah. And they're, I mean, like I say, they're, they're straightforward. You know, they hit it. Terry called me, met me up there. We looked at it. So, um.
And I appreciate that. And I think too, Scott, you have been a great addition to our team for this exact reason. They know you're watching it. They know you're up there looking and seeing what's going on.
And Terry, I think with the new local manager, it's, uh, it's a hundred percent improvement. Stuff, because we had to make arrangements for escorting the yellow pine, you know, and Forest Service called me on Saturday and. And I called Terry at, you know, seven fifteen this morning and we got it arranged, got it on the escort list. Um, so there, um. He just switched Tuesdays, not the day, Wednesdays, the day they generally go in there, but he just switched it with the riggins pickup. Um, the, the, a lot more accommodating, a lot, you know, wanting to work with us.
Thank you. So they're going in tomorrow then?
Yep, he'll be out there at seven o'clock and get in line and, and he'll go.
I was taking phone calls all weekend on it. So I will call. I was taking phone calls all weekend on it, so I will call and let them know.
Yeah, so, on the list, I talked to Cecil back there, he knows they're coming.
Okay, so you have talked to Cecil? I'll let Laurent know too, so, okay.
Good to go.
Scott, thank you so much. This, this was a good presentation. I like that.
I think, um, Wednesday night's the Fair Board meeting.
Wednesday night is the Fair Board meeting, I'm sure.
So I'll be there and give them their marching orders. Give me a list of what you want now, not two weeks before you want it.
Wednesday, six o'clock.
Okay, yeah, I just, I just want to ask them to get me the stuff now. You know, see, you know, we know we need to get lights in the open class and stuff, but I need to know, you know. Before a month before fair, because trying to get contractors a lot of.
Yeah, we're gonna start pushing them a little bit on all this, the budget stuff and everything. We're gonna start trying to get this dialed in a long time beforehand.
Yeah, okay.
Appreciate that. You have a good day, Scott.
I'm gonna look at getting an architect now for the Maritidal Building.
Yeah, we talked about that this morning. We're gonna get somebody online that can get us a good layout of. Come in here and all these people that are gonna move, what their needs are, see what square footage. They need to work with each one, so we're gonna get Clearwater online, get that started. That's a good thing. Thank you, Scott. Yep, yep, yep. All we have left, Sherry, what do you want to do?
Yeah, we gotta, you know, we're gonna have to come back in half an hour, I think, because you gotta leave it open for public, but. I don't know. Doug, no one's called in about doing anything for public.
No, ma'am, I have not received any requests to appear for the commissioners.
I talked to Senna on this McGregor thing and it. All we do is make the statement that this is what's going on, this is why we're doing this and. And now we are gonna table it until the twenty-sixth, I believe.
Yeah, the problem with that one is, is that, um, it was posted. So. Doug, what do you think of just having Neil call in online too and he and I both just be online? So he doesn't have to wait down there for that long. Just to make that motion, because that's all it's gonna take. I mean, if you were to start the video and just have Neil and I both on a Zoom.
But don't you have to finish, don't you, because it stopped at such a certain.
That you have to. We're extending. Uh, but that's what we're extending to the twenty-sixth.
That's correct.
So alls we have to do today is just say that we are tabling it and going to put it on the twenty-sixth, so literally you're gonna stay down there for. An hour and a half. Hour and forty-five, just to make that statement.
Is there any reason we couldn't do it now? Are we looking for public to show up?
I would anticipate members of the public are going to be appearing, but I don't know, commission.
It's a public hearing, so we have to do it then.
It's not, the, the public hearing's been closed, but this is the deliberate, continued of deliberations from the public hearing that occurred.
I could take a long lunch, I mean, it's.
Yeah, yep, you get a long lunch.
Oh, well, the first time we've had to do that. I could come up there and take you to lunch.
I think you've got out of the munch time. No, thanks. I'm good for today. Yeah, I mean, the only thing is if we have somebody show up at eleven forty-five to speak, but, I mean, we haven't had anybody for quite some time to show up to do that. But I hate to keep you there for another forty-five minutes just to do that. So I would just say you call it for lunch and somebody shows up and we will have to, you know, we can tell them to come back at one. Doug, what's your thought on that?
I am leaving it to the discretion of, of the commissioners today. I don't have a recommendation one way or the other.
I mean, we haven't had anybody show up. Commissioner discussion since that one guy was fussing about the road out there at Tammerack.
Correct.
So.
So let's just go ahead and call it until one and reconvene at one o'clock for that. Just to set the public hearing and, and move it forward to our next meeting.
I, I think that it's not a bad idea. So Doug, let's go ahead and recess for lunch and.